All this emergency meeting to order. Um, we're talking about the coronavirus disease 2019. I got just a few brief points. We're going to try to be very brief tonight because I think everybody has dinner plans and whatever, et cetera. Uh, my point is we should not be in a panic mode, although it is a very serious issue. The difference between this and polio when I was a kid was polio became a panic issue. And all I'm saying is this is very serious, but I don't think it should become a panic issue. Now, why do I say that? I got a call from my wife about an hour ago. She was at Harris Teeter. The shelves are getting emptied. And she was very upset for one reason. There was no toilet paper there either. Bad. So, the media's been, Cassie, and I heard what you said. The media's been a double edged sword here. They've done some very good things to get this thing moving in our country, but it maybe has gone a little too far. So, all I'm saying is it shouldn't be a panic issue. It should be one where, and I've talked to doctors and nurses, where we just take this as we gotta get this fixed. Right? That was my own point. Um, symptoms? Yes, you can go to the doctor and have them, him or her, work on your symptoms. Coughing, uh, fever, sore throat, et cetera. But, what I didn't know until today, and I talked to the captain about this too, I don't think this will ever happen. If you are found to be having the virus, that information along with your name, address, and telephone number goes directly to the Board of Health. And they monitor you on a standpoint of go home, stay home, et cetera. I don't think that'll ever come as a real issue with somebody who says, "I'm not doing it, I'm gonna do it." But I did know that HIPAA, we all know HIPAA, does not apply. Does not apply. That's what I learned from the doc. Um, hmm, let's see what else. Oh, I have extras here I can give out after the meeting. I've given it to all the town board members, but I have from the, uh, I guess the symptoms are symptoms, how's it spread, steps to prevent illness, schools, which most of us, I think, are talking anyway about anticipating that they're gonna close the schools. They already have in some of the counties. And childcare programs and how this affects them. So, I think right now, as it stands, we're canceling a lot of the meetings. My favorite meeting of all time, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock at Dunkin' Donuts, has been canceled. So, I'm sad about that. Uh, but again, we're not canceling town board meetings or planning board meetings at this point in time. And I agree with that because there's a lot of stuff that we still have to do. So, that's my story. I'm turning it over to our efficient, effective, and young town manager.
Thank you for that kind introduction, Mayor.
How was that? Good.
Uh, thank you again, Mayor and Council, for your flexibility today to meet on a short notice. We did feel that it was important to update the full council in one open session so we can have some dialogue and an opportunity to discuss what our plans are in terms of addressing some of the public health and safety concerns that are out there, to articulate what those are and answer any questions and have some dialogue about any of those components. But I'd like to walk through those though here this evening. And, um, so the purpose is to update the mayor and council and the community on the actions the town plans to take, again, to help mitigate the spread of the COVID-19, or also known as the coronavirus. I will say, staff has been working extremely hard this week, and particularly over the last couple of days, as I'm sure in your organization it's been the exact same way. Uh, so I do want to recognize the staff who are in the audience here tonight and thank them for their really hard work. And so what we're trying to do is take appropriate actions that follow the recommendations that we've been getting from Governor Roy Cooper, as well as other federal and state public health agency recommendations. Some of these actions, as you can imagine, are difficult, but necessary, I think, given the current circumstances. And I do want to add that we've been in very close coordination and communication with our state partners and county partners as well, at a really heightened level, particularly over the last two or three days. So, I think that's really important and some great collaboration going on in that front. The one thing that, just to start off, maybe for benefit of the community, and Lynn, if you can move to the next slide just for one second. One of the questions has been, why have we, has our nation and state and local area been having these ramped up precautions and preventive measures as it relates to trying to stem the virus? And what it really comes down to is, I'd like to just briefly, this chart, what our public, national public health agencies are trying to avoid is a spike in, um, in the virus, as you can see here by the pink area. And that type of a spike puts an added pressure on the public health system to address that and manage those particular cases. So, the concept here in terms of what the national strategy being is to try to mitigate that spike, as well as, I say elongate it just a little bit, but kind of spread it out just a little bit to position the nation in a way that we can better respond and hopefully limit the number of cases that occur in our, in our nation and our community. So, that, from a standpoint of why are some of these actions being taken, this hopefully is a little bit of a visual representation of the overall strategy behind these. Let me go back just a second. So, Mayor and Council, in summary, again, uh, the Governor Roy Cooper and Wake County Board of County Commissioners Chair Ford have issued a state of emergency declaration. And the town, town actions are in accordance with recommendations from Governor Roy Cooper to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We do have some postponements and cancellations of some town events following these recommendations to avoid events and activities where the attendance of 100 people or more is anticipated. Other events and meeting modifications are planned, where some non-time sensitive meetings can be delayed or postponed to mitigate that social contact. And I do think it's very important to note that town services continue without interruption. Very important. So, Mayor and Council, the, uh, in the community here, I wanted to read off some actions that are planned, and these would be in effect starting at 7:00 AM tomorrow morning. First off, as it relates to town-sponsored meetings. No meetings through April 12th, 2020. This would include the Tree Advisory Committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the Board of Adjustment, and community engagement meetings on town projects. Those will be rescheduled. There are no changes at this time related to the planning board or to town council scheduled meetings. But one thing that we will be mindful of is if there are opportunities to, um, to, you know, push off or hold on any non-time sensitive issues that may attract higher populations of individuals in terms of attending meetings or whatnot, we will look at those and where possible or feasible, we may try to make some adjustments that could mitigate in terms of the, um, the total number of population of people that may be in a, in a social setting at a particular time. The, as it relates to staffing, obviously we have a heavy focus on keeping our employees safe while maintaining municipal services. We are going to be implementing temporary telecommunicating, uh, telecommuting availability starting on Monday, March 16th, along with considerations for flex scheduling with employees. We'll be encouraging alternate meeting options such as use of other digital and video tools, practicing social distancing. That is a term that is generally, uh, applied to be, as much as possible, try to stay, you know, approximately six feet away from individuals when you can, uh, again, just to try to limit the direct contact. We've instituted no travel to large conferences or meetings through April 15th, and we've elevated daily cleaning of commonly touched hard surfaces throughout all facility facilities. On the following page, I want to note a few specific areas with our Parks and Recreation Department. Obviously, this is an area that has a high level of interaction with the community, but also a high level of events that we anticipate having 100 or more attendees. So, we, uh, we were proposing to cancel and postpone these following activities through April 12th, 2020. First, this weekend, the family prom, uh, being canceled. Spring fling, which is an event in early, um, April that would project to have approximately 2,500 individuals attend that, that will be canceled. Youth spring sports, postponing the start of that. Also postponing senior programs and cultural center performances. Those will be canceled, but we will look for opportunities to reschedule those with the, um, with the performers and scheduling of availability of our cultural arts center. There are no changes to the Arbor Day tree planting, which is scheduled tomorrow morning. No changes to the farmer's market at this time. And all of our facilities, Parks and Recreation facilities, remain open. That includes fitness and youth classes. There are no changes with those at this time. There are, additionally, I want to note that there are no changes, but depending in the event that Wake County Public Schools were to make any cancellations of classes or some other modifications, it could, and it would likely trigger further cancellations associated with after-school, uh, youth and adult programming. A couple of other key town pieces of information. We want to encourage residents that we do have online bill pay for anybody who wishes, or who would like to avoid coming in, uh, to Town Hall, that, that is certainly available. There are also other opportunities to call or email or to request information from the town through digital and electronic means. We certainly would encourage that. Our police and fire department, community engagements are canceled through April 12th, 2020. And there are two sites that the governor recommended yesterday, um, on our conference call, that, uh, to all local governments, has two key sources for residents to receive additional information. The first is a website. It's the ncdhhs.gov/coronavirus. That's a state website. And there's also a phone hotline that residents can call, and that number is 866-462-3821. Two great sources for individuals and residents to get additional information. So, Mayor and Council, that's a general highlight of the key, um, changes that we are currently planning and would love to have, um, any feedback, dialogue, or questions that you may have about these. I will note, you know, this is a rapidly evolving situation, and we're trying to be proactive. And then at the same time, I think, Mayor, you know, you're exactly right. There's certainly no need for panic, and, um, I think it's important for, um, you know, for our community to carry on in ways that, you know, that people expected to carry on. And so, we're gonna do our best to do that.
There is one question that you brought up, um, from some of my senior friends. Why are they being, uh, put out on this program and maybe somebody else isn't? There's a reason. I know what it is, but if you, I-
Yes, no, there's a very good reason, and that is, um, all the, you know, the World Health Organization, uh, the CDC, Center for Disease Control, all the statistics show that residents who are 65 years of age and older, and there's some other, um, medical conditions that also elevate the risk, but that 65 and older population is at most at risk for, um, uh, death associated with the coronavirus. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Two things, Randy, that I wanted to raise. First of all, thanks to all of our staff for being here late on a Friday. Thanks for all of your hard work this past week and everything that's happened. I've talked to a few department heads throughout the week, and it sounds like preparations are well underway. So, kudos to all of you guys, uh, for stepping up and looking to maintain the same level of service to our residents. Uh, two questions. First one on Parks and Rec related to playground equipment. I saw that facilities and hard services, extra cleaning, have we thought anything about playground equipment, handlebars, monkey bars, things like that, where there's a lot of people from a cleaning or disinfection standpoint?
Yes, and I, why don't I add or invite Leanne Palmer, our Parks and Recreation Director, to come up and say a few comments? That's a good question. Thank you.
I hate to admit it. You're there a lot. Using it yourself, I assume.
A little bit of both, yeah.
Um, to date, we have not, um, done any additional cleaning at our playground areas. Certainly, we've increased and stepped up our internal spaces for cleaning. Um, I'm, I'm not sure we're able to take on such a task, quite frankly. Um, what we would suggest and encourage, anybody that does use the playground equipment or any of our other outdoor spaces, to be sure to visit the restroom facility to wash their hands immediately after playing before they would move on to another area. All of our restroom facilities are open and available and currently stocked with, you know, soap and paper towels for the best hygiene. But I'm not sure we could keep every surface of the playground wiped down on a, you know, on a regular basis.
Yeah, is it, I don't know if it makes sense to look into like a contractor versus our staff, but I'd just be interested in the cost, like what would that cost on a bi-weekly or some type of whatever recommended basis? I would just be interested in what that cost might be. Fully understand that we're not staffed to accommodate that, but I'd just be interested to see what that would cost.
You know, we'd be happy to look into that. And we do have a contractor who we brought on board to do some of this extra cleaning, and we can certainly inquire with them and others what that might look like and report back to you.
Okay. Appreciate it. The second thing I had was, um, I saw an email from Duke Energy earlier today before I came over here related to them not turning off, uh, rate payers, uh, services throughout this kind of fluctuation time. Uh, I don't know if there's been any discussion of that from a staff level related to our water bills, and if, if that's something we want to consider, I'd be happy to make that in the form of a motion if it's something that we're in agreement with or if it hasn't been discussed.
Uh, yes, we did talk about that this morning, and, um, and our thought on that would be to suspend cutoffs. Uh, and so, at least on a temporary basis, you know, there are several other jurisdictions that are doing the same, and, uh, from the, particularly from the standpoint of the number one best way to avoid, um, obtaining the virus is to wash your hands, and you need water to do that. And so, uh, we want to, uh, do that. And so, we'll continue to work with, with our individuals who may not pay, or who aren't, haven't paid, um, but, um, but we will, we will suspend cutoffs at this point.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Follow up on that. I think everybody's water was turned on over the holidays. Is that still the case that everybody has water that was suspended? I think they were, sure.
Yes?
Okay.
Come on up, A.
Okay.
Trying to address on our interim finance director.
Um, yes, we did, um, restore everyone that, um, either we had received payment form or arrangements had been made either through some type of agency or whatever. So, um, we continue to work with that group of individuals, but, um, yes, to our knowledge, the only disconnections that are taking place at this time is people who are moving out and-
Right, and natural ones.
And moving in, that kind of thing.
Okay, that's fantastic. Do we need a motion for that, or are we good with not?
I don't believe so. I, and I'm gonna confirm with our interim finance director, but my understanding is that there is administrative authority to, um, to make that suspension at this time.
Right, I think that, yes, I would agree with what Randy says, that we don't, don't need to make a motion to do so, but we should be okay.
Good. Take that.
Um, I had questions, and I hadn't checked to see if there's a banner ad on our website to contain the latest, so we could also tell people concerning our town and things we're doing, the latest of what we're doing. Um, it feels like perhaps we should post a sign somewhere to let people know that our external playgrounds are, are not being cleaned regularly in case people are assuming that or, you know. Should we tell people that if they're not?
I don't know.
Or at least say on the website that, that-
Right.
They're not, that's within the scope of things that we're trying to do.
Right. I think we do have an external communication that would go out following this meeting.
Okay.
Um, and, um, we could add that piece in there, just to let folks know.
Okay, Will, more?
And I'm just gonna say, um, I do know I did Meals on Wheels today, and they are anticipating to keep the program going, so if those are at home and they want to help. Um, a lot of the folks that deliver Meals on Wheels are, are older, so maybe it's time that maybe we don't, we have younger people step up to help out, uh, because the folks that we are delivering to are an older population, and they do not want them having to leave their home. Um, as well as, there are several callouts for the food cupboard, for collecting more food, just to help people through this, and for those struggling that are needing it. There, I know the Town Hall is a collection point. There are also other residences that they said are corrupt. So, it's a great opportunity to help with that.
Could you or someone send me an email on that point? And I have some volunteers that would be helpful.
I know.
They've been looking for that kind of thing. That would be, remind me to help.
I would, so I can do that, yeah.
Okay, Sean?
I just have a quick, uh, question. One, is there any possibility if we're gonna keep the planning board going to potentially record that for those public who do want to see that in the future, so it's a recorded session versus just a note session? Might be something good if we're gonna keep that one going. Um, and also, it's probably, I know we've talked about this in the past, but, you know, potentially the opportunity for the town council, uh, meetings to whether there's an ability to Skype in a public comment. I know that's a discussion we had a while back, but this may give us an opportunity to explore that and see how that will work in practical terms.
Yes.
Give it a quick shot and see if it works, uh, but without the chance of being overridden by, you know, okay, we've got 1,000 people from home that want to make a public comment, you know, so obviously, keep that down. But I think, right now, there's an opportunity to potentially use some technology that we have out there to still allow people to be engaged, and I think that's the, that's the most important thing for me for all this. My, my sister actually works as a nurse out in Issaquah, which is the epicenter of all the COVID patients that are sending in the Seattle area to there, so she's a ER nurse. I had an interesting conversation with her last night about her experience in the middle of the last winter. And, and, and most of that, I, I hope that, um, through our social media and what we're getting in the town is, is to continue to portray a sense of reality. And I won't use the word calm because, you know, that, you know, people are like, okay, there's, there's a reason to be concerned about this, that's fine. But just a sense of reality, and the sense of reality is this epidemic or this virus does discriminate, as the mayor was alluding to. So, it does discriminate against those who have some type of immune system problem already, a challenge there.
Yep.
And those who are elderly. So, as we go forward with this, you know, if it continues to worsen, then, you know, we need to be cognizant of how those people are, are left alone, if you will. And, and I don't mean that by, you know, excluding them, but, you know, we need to be cognizant of who you're gathering with. So, you may be asymptomatic, you may not have anything, but you probably don't need to be hanging around grandma or grandpa and, uh, potentially dragging something you've contracted to, uh, to those folks. And so, with that, with the Parks and Rec, I mean, hopefully grandparents aren't taking their kids to the, uh, to the playground, so probably a place where that breeding ground might be. So, you know, some younger folks, you know, obviously mom and dad are out there doing that, but, uh, you know, for the younger folks, right now, and it interesting, I was just watching the, the teleprompter there, if you will, but CDC, uh, just, just reported that only 2% of the test cases that have been done so far have come back positive. So, that's the other thing they're finding in the Seattle area right now. The, the first portion of this in the country that's really getting hard hit is, there's a lot of people that are concerned, and 98% of those cases that were tested came back as they had some type of respiratory problem, whether it's the flu or something else, and did not have COVID. So, again, trying to portray a sense of reality to everyone, go and get evaluated, but you don't need to have a test necessarily. Get evaluated if you're, if you have symptoms, but this isn't, everybody needs to go out and have a test because we will overrun the medical system, uh, and it will not be able to keep up if, uh, if we continue to push the narrative that, uh, has been pushed out there right now, um, in the media. So, hopefully, we can continue to push that, that sense of reality. And, and don't get too, uh, too overhyped when someone's coughing next to you because remember this is allergy season right now. The trees are blooming. We've diverted airplanes already because someone had a case of allergies. Um, so, you know, just because somebody has allergies or something else, but if you truly have symptoms, being sick, then you probably don't need to be around coughing other people. But there are lots of folks that have allergies, rhinitis, or other things, and we need to be aware of that. So, I think it's, it's time for a little bit of reality. I won't say, use the word calm again, but a sense of reality to convince everybody, and, and that's the, uh, I think, important for this time for us is, uh, as we communicate as community leaders to all the folks in our, in our community.
To Mr. McGrath's point, the, um, uh, this is my interpretation, but I would characterize that I think there's a, a sense of looking, you know, these next two to four weeks, uh, is, is, most of the delays, cancellations you're seeing over this two to four week period. Uh, so, um, you know, I think there's, there's a hope and a desire that, and a strategic intent, that these efforts here immediately will stave, stave that off. And it may be an issue that we, um, have with us for, you know, some months, question mark on that, but that the height of it, you know, I think there's a, a high interest to see what occurs over the next two to four weeks.
And the last thing, because you, you mentioned this, is far as being prepared for, uh, school cancellations, uh, for those who didn't hear, Virginia government, uh, Virginia governor announced that all Virginia schools are canceled for the next two weeks. So, my daughter got that to know since she's a teacher in Virginia, so we may be next to fall very rapidly behind.
I think so.
So, hopefully, we're starting to, to think about those things and those considerations, especially for after-school or folks that need to get to work and don't have an opportunity to, you know, have childcare.
Just a couple of quick add, add notes. Um, the CDC reports, there, there's another email source that I would recommend you think about. It's called the Emergency Email and Wireless Network. I've never heard of it until I found out today. It keeps you up to date on everything that's happening, along with, a friend, doctor of mine said, "I, I will try to patch you into the Duke network, and we will keep you advised of what we know." So, the more information we get, obviously, the better off we are. Uh, I will probably know that tomorrow, next day, certainly by Monday, but there's another email address that you can tap in, Duke, and, uh, I'll also look at, uh, maybe Rex, too. The CDC, though, 1,678 viruses, death tally at this point, 41. Good, bad, in-between, 41 is not good, it's not bad, it's, it's, anybody that has one is bad. So, that's the kind of information you can get, and then to the point that you made, Randy, pandemic could be over by June. That's what they're predicting. Could be wrong, could be right, I don't know. But to the point is, I think there is a, an end point to be projected at this point. Now, they're talking about June. What else have we missed?
Quick question on, um, our fitness programs, uh, having no changes. Did we survey local gyms regarding what they're doing? I understand O2 Fitness was canceling its classes while the gym remains open.
Let me invite, uh, Leanne Palmer to come back up.
Would you like to come back up? You can stay up here if you like.
We have been talking with other fitness areas and also other municipal Parks and Recreation Departments that have, uh, fitness centers. Um, and at this point, nobody had canceled their fitness classes, but we are being extra diligent in providing additional wipes, hand sanitizers, encouraging people to bring their own mats to lay on as well. Um, our numbers have decreased admittedly a little bit, but there's still a lot of people that are using the facility. So, we'll continue, continue to monitor, and again, if I think if the thought is there's additional, um, separation or, you know, quarantines or isolation requested or suggested, I should say, um, then we would go ahead and, and make those changes. But to now, you know, we're just being extra cautious and diligent in providing additional sanitation supplies for those fitness classes and equipment.
Good. Thanks.
Leanne, before you go-
Oh, she's up there. You got another question?
Um, postponement of our youth, youth spring sports. What about the leagues already in session?
All of those would be, uh, postponed for four weeks. So, I know soccer is in session, baseball assessments just took place last week, or this week, I should say. So, everything would be postponed for a four week, um, delay.
Starting?
Starting tomorrow morning is what we're expecting. So, we'll be sending the notification out as soon as this meeting, um, concludes.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
Um, and I, I would just like to add that I've spoken with our school board representative, Lindsay Manhafi, yesterday and today. Um, obviously, there is a lot going around the community about this, and she's receiving a lot of calls on Wake County's plan.
Yep.
Right now, they are taking their cues from the Department of Health, which I think is the right way to go. So, just to everybody in the community, this is not going to be a Wake County Public Schools decision. They are taking it from above, but as of, um, 30 minutes ago, there was no plans to cancel the school right now.
Correct. Reason I say that I own it, for that, I, I did the same thing. And it was, in essence, uh, we are not going to, we've done this before on certain subjects. We are not going to comment on this. You have to go to the Board of Health, or the Wake County, blah, blah, blah. And, uh, I, I'm just saying, in my opinion, based upon the fact that we get a snow report coming maybe, and they close the schools, I just think in my mind that if possibly it could be closed. What have we missed? Anything?
I had a question. Randy, what percentage of jobs could actually telecommute at the town? I mean, there's not that many.
Right, yeah. I, I don't have a, an exact number and percentage in my head, but what I can tell you is that most of the services that we deliver are delivered through people out in the community. So, police and fire and public works and, and to a large degree, um, Parks and Recreation. So, we, the vast majority of our jobs are, are probably not conducive to telecommuniting type work, so, but we do have some, and, or what we have done, on Monday, uh, department directors will begin assessing in their departments who might be eligible, and then working with those individuals, um, to make arrangements on a temporary basis to make that happen.
Are there projects that might be postponed because of staffing and this social distancing so that we're gonna, maybe not the sidewalk or things like that? Is there any impact that you see now?
Right now, I, I don't have any indication of any projects that would be delayed, um, from that standpoint. I mean, um, no, a local superintendent and head nod's out here in the audience from the department directors, but I think at this time, my understanding is that, you know, things are moving forward, we're moving forward on projects and issues. You know, the one thing that, that will, obviously, if we postpone some community engagement meetings and, uh, some things of that nature, it may, it may just, on a slow, on a temporary, short-term basis, alter just a little bit of the timing of some things, but at this point, I don't, I don't see- But at this point, I don't, I don't see changes in project deliveries for ma, any major projects.
Very good.
Correct. We have a community meeting, we're supposed to have a community meeting next week on that, and so we will reschedule that.
Uh, one last comment that just came to my mind. Randy and I talked about this today.